This is George.
Looks like him.
Should catch up meeting tab.
Uh, good evening everyone. I'll call a meeting to order. Seven oh one. We have four members present with John Cronin as absent. If anyone's recording the meeting, would they please make it known? Thank you. Uh, copies of the agenda are on the front table. They are -- they've got it listed as a continued public hearing. We have in fact closed the public hearings on both of these projects. And the purpose for tonight's meeting would be to generate some conditions of approval if that's the way the board wishes to go and vote on the same. Uh, first up is the S and H Realty LLC also called the Walmart Outpost on Seth Toby Road and Cranberry Highway. We're just looking through the paperwork here to see if we have -- do you know what the most current revision date is? I guess Charlie --
The plan is I think it's the twenty second.
Do you need help George?
No, these are uh--
June twenty two. Okay, sorry. How's my fifty five?
Good.
Sitting. Waiting. Hurry up and wait.
Is that it George? In their effort to not have to send everything open over, I think they sent us the old stuff. Let me check the other box.
There's a pile of two right here George. I think this is all here. That's perfect.
June seventeenth.
It's the June seventeenth cover.
What was the latest plan date you had John?
Was it May twenty second or June twenty?
June twenty second.
June twenty second.
This is June seventeenth. There was a response. Six seventeen.
What's the latest one you have George?
May twenty second.
If you want, we can run out to a car and get it set up. It'd be wonderful. There's a uh June twenty third. June twenty fifth. We've got one of them. Hold on. Oh, that's the wrong one. Sorry.
They want the way back though?
Uh, yeah, I think it's--
They're making a later one for May because this this doesn't have the uh the area to the there blocked out for the parking spaces that we have to close the site on.
Revised six seventeen.
Yeah, we have a small yeah, we have one planned through through June seventeenth John.
Six seventeen.
Mm, that looks a little right. This is what?
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Six seventeen. But the cover says--
He's going to bring out a full size.
Yeah.
But the cover says June seventeenth.
Six seventeen. In this reference, your letter references uh yeah, June seventeenth.
Yeah.
And you reference recommendations through through eight specifically. That's in that's in here.
Okay.
Uh, sure we do. There's a couple lot of trees on this.
I have more if you need more.
You ought to have a bonfire.
We go seventeen.
Those are seventeen. They need a full setup there George.
We we've got a--
Yeah, we found a seventeen. Thank you. And the smudge on the way back is in.
Left hand, right hand.
Anyway, you wanna?
I got I got copies of this.
Yeah, thanks. I need more paperwork.
Charlie, are those the originals or those copies?
These are copies. They couldn't find the originals.
You got one to share?
Yeah.
Uh, shit.
Uh, gap plus ninety nine cents.
Whoa, stuck to me. Items two through eight. I knew there was some things he wanted us to condition. Oh, there's the Bayside Eastman. They had--
Yeah.
They had part of this but no.
No. I love that show KP. I love those shows. I like going up Rochester and then I go in stuff.
Next.
Yeah, just get a sandwich and then down at Cape like go to uh Yakal Bro. Watch Red Sox.
Mm, someday.
Yeah.
That's too soon.
No. Yeah, that's that's a lot of work. You know, get in the car and go and get ready and go.
Put the key in and go.
Last time we talked about this, what was the foreword? Mike? Last time we talked about this project, wasn't there a holdup? Charlie was gonna do some research on something.
Uh, Charlie, could I have you come up to the mic and just go over a couple of points from you?
Something to do with-- I wanna say zoning, using a check on clarification for some zoning issue.
I know customarily, I was just looking for it, it's not uncommon for a developer to wanna do some test pits during construction. Is that the case here that have they all been done?
Uh, let me look. See what we decided to do.
You know, sometimes they don't do the specific pits until they actually dig the holes.
That would certainly be acceptable. Um, I don't recall that there were any--
Yes, there were. There were tests from the plant.
When will they when will the second percent of maintenance plan for storm water? Is that during an application process or is that done afterwards because it's for all?
If you look on uh just example on the existing conditions, it's EX dash one. Uh, if you look on the parcel, it shows the existing grading. And if you look carefully, it's got several little uh boxes that look like checkerboard. I see one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten of them. And I did review those and it's all good sand, good material. So they're there. The test logs might not be on the plans. I think they were in a part of the drainage calculations. They were as a supplement to the back of the drainage calculations, but they were acceptable material.
So six seventeen is the plan date for the most current?
Yes.
Yeah, I don't have six seventeen. I have five twenty two. I have a cover letter from six seventeen that attached.
On the latest plan, there's a little outside of the uh outside of the index is a stamped out. So I just had construction will comply with plans submitted to ten fourteen and revised through six seventeen fourteen.
Mister Chairman, can I share? On the storm water management maintenance program, would that be uh something that's presented with this and maybe I haven't seen it in the back of the plan, Mr. Rowley?
Excuse me?
The storm water management maintenance program?
Uh, that was also in the um attachment.
Oh.
Yeah, it it's a part of that.
Thank you.
Yeah. There's a whole section in that particular regulations toward the back, I think, Charles. Four or five pages, I think, for actually pre-construction setting up uh mitigation measures against sediment and all that sort of thing and then during construction and then what you're supposed to do after construction's complete.
Okay.
That's all in there.
You reviewed that and that's all?
Yes.
Yeah, it's in here.
Okay, thank you.
Was there uh was this your connection approved?
I haven't seen the letter. Last meeting, we were waiting for the le-- they were still waiting for their letter. They based it on the sheet capacity of the restaurants, huh? That's the I assume. I think there's a calculation that kind of-- If that's the case, we should make sure. Is this our my turn, Charlie?
Six seven's all.
Which is?
What have we been waiting for?
He accepts no responsibilities.
Kind of letting bring a laptop. It would take a lot more time to take it. Now, we customarily put a two-year approval
Yeah.
on approvals. Plans should be substantially complete within two years. Uh, from the town file at the time clerk, town clerk lost any appeal period. Are you okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Applicant will coordinate with the planning department to determine the schedule of inspections. Applicant will comply with the plan submitted to ten fourteen and revised through six seventeen. Changes in building plan, size or locations, facades will be submitted to the planning board for review. Planning board will determine if it's major or minor in nature. We did the site inspection, uh provisions. Applicant will meet with planning board or their representative to determine which trees can be saved.
Yeah, that's on this letter.
Yeah.
That was gonna occur before any site work was gonna be done?
Mm.
Mister Chairman, I think there was still one open item with the parking where they reduced the parking, which was a good thing.
Yeah.
Evidently, um, I don't think that there was a final discussion in reference to what should occur if they need to open that parking up. I think that was uh still being contemplated by Mister Rowley and some of the board members.
Uh, if you got a copy of my uh letter that I wrote on June thirteenth? Sat in page three down at the bottom. It's general comments and recommendations. Uh, I had put some language in there about that. Specifically number four.
I don't have the letter, Mister Rowley, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it just says we should make reference the number of parking spaces approved for construction and the number of spaces to be set aside for the future based on evidence required for the operation of facilities.
The number was uh twenty one spaces?
Yeah, it was down to one fifty four.
One fifty three, I believe. Um, it was one seventy four and we took out twenty one or one the area that's close to that retention area. Twenty one would be held for future development if it can be shown that it's needed. That shows up on sheet C four of the plans. Uh, you'll notice there's a bold dash line around that group of parking spaces that's there. And it adds up to twenty one. The idea was that they could build the uh build the two islands or the return islands for uh that particular space where it says three hundred and sixty three square feet. You'll see that on the plan. That particular island, it has a double light on it. And then there's the next little return island where you go out onto the access road. So that could be built, but the paving that's behind that could be left off and simply loomed and seeded temporarily till such time as they come back and say, well, because of a particular tenant, we need X number of more spaces. That could be allotted. It's been calculated into the drainage calculations. It's all been accounted for, but you don't need to build it now. And it pulls it back to uh more what is in line with what they're saying they need for the particular buildings they have. Pulls it back to a hundred and fifty three spaces.
What page is that John?
C four. See it George?
No, I don't see it. I don't find that one.
See this little dash line around here?
Okay.
That would not be built now. But that island could be built and this little protrusion could be built. Because you've got a double light pole right there anyway. But you don't need to build these necessarily. But it's it's accounted for in the drainage calculations for this area.
Now, your response number six regarding the Walmart special permit.
Get the right one here.
I know I read the, the first decision, but apparently there was a subsequent decision rendered by Z B A on some modification at Walmart.
There was a modification, but I think it had to do with the drainage area that was on the other side of the Walmart building. I don't think it had anything to do with the landscaping that was here. And if you look at the plan that's referred to in that special permit. It shows a continuous landscape buffer.
Mm-hmm.
Right around the out parcel. As a matter of fact, it, it goes beyond the out parcel boundary and is into the out parcel. So they showed it landscaped that way. What this plan does is make a cut into the landscaping so that they can connect onto the existing aisles and travel and so forth. That was shown on the Walmart plan. But the special permit that they have doesn't allow that connection. It makes no reference to a connection.
Uh, I had requested with Z B A that we come in this, the ninth, to discuss the modification, but I'm not sure that made it on the ninth's agenda. I haven't seen it, Dave wasn't sure when I called, so I'll have to confirm that tomorrow, I'll get back to you.
Mr. Rowley, have you seen a letter from the sewer commissioners yet?
I haven't seen one, but, um, I was told that it was supposed to be ready, I don't know whether the applicant has a copy now or not. Do you know if you got that, Michael?
I have a lot of it, so I haven't got an input of it, but the actually I have a copy of it. I know we were told it was in, but I haven't seen it.
Sean?
Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
I just checked with Mr. Campino, they have a, uh, base agreement for eleven thousand gallons per day. They're waiting for some information through Shirley on cost breakdown before they finish signing off on the letter.
I assume you could make the, as a special condition to the, to the special permit, that a copy of that letter be received for the file. Prior to the issuance of either a building permit or occupancy permit, whichever one you prefer. I assume you'd need it for a building permit, cause if you had.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, if you had a Title V system, you'd need a sign-off from the Board of Health. So, not being on Title V, I assume you'd need a sign-off from the sewer department.
I think I have it, I have the response letter. Yeah, I think I just got the eight.
Let's just put pro attach load.
Huh? Yeah. It's all weird, it's already weird.
Is there any other, any other things, uh?
Two through eight seem to be.
We need to reference?
Um, I think two through eight touches on the parking spaces, the, uh, storm water management system. I don't recall a lot of conversation about lighting, so I'm assuming that all of that met with Mr. Rowley's approvals. You know, the revisions and the changes and the projections.
Next one thing that we normally do is reduce the percentage of lighting after closing, so we don't have a globe there, right?
Right.
Uh. We could use the same language they use in Walmart or in the processing, so they're all consistent.
When you're closing. The hours may be different though for the restaurant people, they're not gonna be rolling out till early morning. So you wanna make sure they're safe, leaving there.
Wouldn't say one hour after closing, so what we?
I would think, on a restaurant, it's sometime longer, two hours is fairly normal, clean up the bars, the kitchens.
For the staff, when you're done with their work.
I would think, I would think a couple hours.
I certainly don't want to leave them in the dark.
You don't want the ladies, the waitresses, cooks.
I think might hurt somebody. If I had to do it again, I'd go back and make sure the traffic lights don't work after they close. You go by there twelve o'clock at night and the light spreads, why?
I'm tempted to look and see if there's anything common, if not, go through. I don't.
I almost did that one night, there was a steak.
The one time, the one time you did, there'd be a cruiser behind you. I know.
Well, there was, I was just about ready to blow through it, and I looked and there was a steak coffee.
Yeah, that would've cost you.
Yeah, it was like midnight, there's nobody around and the light's on. Can you, anything else, uh? If that's said, I would look for a motion.
I don't tell you, this is gonna be the last official laugh.
What did you want the motion to say, to approve the, let's see, uh, form of the motion?
To approve the project with the aforementioned conditions, I guess.
They'll make a motion to approve the, the project, uh, at twen- Route twenty-eight and Toby Road, uh, with the conditions that George has outlined.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Four zero zero. Um, do you need this copy?
He gave it to me to review, so I'll leave it with you, because you're gonna write up the final conditions. Mr. Chairman?
It was in, it was in our, it was in our stuff, yeah.
That'll be based on, I'm sure, conversation, Mr. Rowley, you've addressed all of your concerns and issues.
Think so, yeah.
So we're good?
All right, one done.
And I'll confirm whether you're on Z B A's agenda for Wednesday. Think that might've got missed.
Can I ask if we are on the agenda, what we're on the agenda for, and is it public hearing, is it informal?
It's an informal discussion on basically the project, what, what you're looking for, how you interact with Walmart. And they will decide whether Walmart needs to come in for a major or minor modification to their plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Unfortunately, when I went in front of them last meeting, I didn't have the specifics of the interaction with you, so. I just came for a talk with them, I didn't come for a talk. Uh, the next project is the site development plan for proposed Dollar General at thirty-one thirty-seven. Are you adjourning us?
That's why I'm here.
No, you can come up to the table if you want. I think, uh. All we have to do is.
That's all, that's all right next to your chair, sir.
Take it that's the latest.
That's.
Is that the latest rendition?
Does it have the bump out?
Yeah.
I don't.
There's a bump out.
It doesn't show the landscape, that's a, uh.
It's a general?
That's a standard design.
So it looks pretty similar.
Similar, there must be cookie cutter.
That's not what they're building for us, that's a, um.
It's more of a general.
It says Eastway, but that's not what they're building, so I think it's just a rendering.
And the latest plan on that is June seventeenth?
Eastway, that's on. This Eastway and stuff.
They changed a later set since, uh, in between the last hearing and this hearing.
Oh, you do have it later?
Uh, date, June thirtieth?
We have, yeah, we don't have that.
Do you have enough to go around?
I have one little set.
Actually, I have one, June thirtieth.
Oh, okay.
Landscape revisions?
Correct.
Sweet.
And, uh.
Certainly better than what was there before.
Well, with all the fence, which, um, you look at it, Charlie.
Compared to its predecessor. It may not be a beautiful building, but the thing that was there before was, phew, awful. Only problem is, I cut through the back there, I, I walk up to have breakfast next door, the breakfast nook, and I come across the railroad tracks. It's gonna be all blocked off. You're gonna have to put a special gate in there for me.
That's it, that's it.
My grandkids, they love to walk up there for breakfast.
These are good for us, okay, thank you.
Well, where do you cut through?
These show.
Right in the back, they cross the railroad tracks.
You can hang the breakfast nook.
They can't take that.
It's actually on this property. It used to be between the house and the motel.
Yep.
There's a path that crosses the railroad tracks.
Well, we fenced that off.
We fenced it in, yeah. As, as a condition, we need a gate with a key, so I can.
Well, we can give a passkey to the restaurant, it's good enough.
Like, so you walk over to the restaurant?
Come on, we're.
So I can, yeah, you're blocking my way here.
We could, we could give you a, uh.
To climb, out the climb over the fence.
We could give you a catapult, you could send the grandchildren over that way.
Yeah, we could do that. They'd like that. They're boys.
Now, did we determine that the, we do set with the same plans?
Yeah, June thirtieth, I think was the date.
Yes. Landscape revisions.
What did we do, sir?
Eastway him.
Mm-hmm. Hmm? Supposedly they wanted updated. They have my money? Right, I think they got mine.
You have, uh, another response letter after June second? Has all been handled on the plans.
Uh, no, I, I had a letter on June twenty-third, which you should have a copy of.
I thought you did, but the other one.
There were five recommendations. For the special permit.
I'm not seeing them in the packet here.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask Mr. Rowley a question while you look?
Say again?
Can I ask Mr. Rowley a question while you look?
Sure.
It's, uh, just my own, um, edification, on the sidewalks on the building.
Yep.
On, facing the building, on the right-hand side, it's five feet wide, on the left-hand side, it's three and a half feet wide. I'm just wondering, why would someone do that? I mean, where the left-hand side is the.
I, I see what you're referring to.
Is the high traffic area where cars will pull up. I just, I didn't know if there's a speci- special reason for, uh, for that.
Uh, I don't know, as I can give a specific reason for it. Uh, the one sidewalk, which is to the right of it, which you pointed out, definitely is wider. The one that's on the left is, is basically there to keep cars away from the building. I don't think they were intending a sidewalk in there at all.
Oh, okay. And that's adequate, three and a half feet? To protect someone who's coming off the parking lot?
Really? Because there's, there's overhang for a bumper of the car, and probably take up a foot and a half of that at least, maybe more.
I mean, it's five feet wide. I mean, it's five feet wide at the loading zone, but then they narrowed it off, and I didn't know if it was something that you had worked with the engineer on in reference to drainage or.
No, I did not discuss that particular issue with the engineer. Drainage-wise, it wouldn't make any difference if it was five or three.
I didn't, yeah, I didn't. I was concerned about a safety factor, because that is the, probably gonna be the busier side of the parking lot, and people are gonna walk to the building. So if they're trying to traverse the sidewalk and cars are pulling in and the nose is coming in, I did.
What if they put, uh, concrete?
Bump.
Wheel.
Wheel stops?
Stops, so that the bumper stops. They, they could, um. At the beginning of the, the three, three and a half feet, that would, you'd at least have the three and a half feet.
It could be fine. I just was looking at it, and I was concerned.
Yeah, they, they could. You know, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a big issue. There's not that many spots there. You know, that, that might be a way to keep that.
Safe.
Let's see if they couple it there. Plus, it might keep a car from jumping that curb and running into the building.
Right.
Someone puts their car and drives instead of reverse, at least they'd feel that first bump before they have launched into the building.
Uh-huh. Mister Chairman? It'll relieve the reverse.
They, they could put the wheel stops in there without sacrificing the aisle width, because, um, standard aisle width is twenty-four feet. You've got in excess of that.
Yeah.
Between the parking spots on the right next to the building and the ones that are on the left that are adjacent to the drainage area. So if they did stick out a little bit, it's not gonna sacrifice the aisle.
Yeah. Would, would make sense. Plus, it would give them, you know, you know what happens. I mean, it seems like every Cumberland Farms in America. People get in, they put their car and drive, and they jump that curb and crash through the front of the building.
Yeah.
You're referring to the defective automobiles that they sold to Seamer Sisters?
Yeah. Just happens all the time. And by having that, that, that granite, uh, wheel stop, it would, at least give them a warning before they jump into the.
So it's kinda interesting, you have a five-foot curb where there's no parking lot.
Yeah.
Where there's no pedestrian access.
Yeah, yeah.
Maybe.
If they, if they could switch it.
Could we ask them to just reverse those? Make the one on the left side five feet, the one on the right where there's no parking, three and a half feet? That should solve any of the problems.
Well, the only reason, the only thing I could see changing that now would, it narrows their loading, the lane where they back in the truck.
Wow.
Which is, what, thirty feet?
Yeah, they, the swing, the turning movements that they've got, though, are more than adequate.
Looks like it's on the end door.
Oh, it's thirty-six feet.
Would they have done the five-foot wide one on the right because there's an emergency exit door there?
Shift the building over three feet?
Would that be, uh, the reason, Mister Rowley?
Probably the reason why it is.
Okay. I mean, I, I just saw the difference, and I, I was thinking that this is gonna be the busier parking lot, and I was concerned about a vehicle pulling up and overhanging the three and a half feet. Please.
So I can provide some clarification as to that, as to the building. Looks in part to the sidewalk here.
Yep.
We have an emergency egress door here.
Yep.
Loading door here, that's why we have the five-foot wide, if the ramp.
Yeah, but they're, they're concerned about the narrow width of the sidewalk, yeah.
The three and a half foot there. Yeah, which is, is their prototypical, but it's really not a path of egress to or from the building. It's, like I said, more of a, a bumper buffer from the parking spaces to the building itself.
It could be, though, as they say, if somebody comes out the car, they could, they could definitely walk there. So without revising the plan, if you added the bumper stops along those spaces, you're not gonna sacrifice an awful lot of width of this aisle.
I.
Oh, it's a possibility.
No, I understand.
Because you've got more than twenty-four feet.
I just wanted to provide a clarification as to why it's five feet on the right side, because that is an emergency egress door.
Yeah, that's a width.
Okay.
Okay. That was just a question.
Yeah.
Yep.
I would say that's probably gonna be your employee parking over there.
Could be.
Yep.
And, Mister Chairman, um, the landscaping has been updated to your satisfaction, Mister Rowley?
It was updated, but not according to my recommendation. Um, my recommendation was that the final landscaping plan with planting as shown on the original submittal should be referenced as the plant, as to plant type, size, and count. Uh, the front islands, especially the middle island, only about has, has about half the number of plants that were in the original plan. I don't know why they didn't just put it back. They could have. They have added, uh, some plants, just a modest number in that, um, planting island that we asked for, and there's a small number over to the right-hand side of the building. But the, the number of plants that were shown on the original plan was something like twenty-eight. There's only about fifteen in that middle island.
And you did, uh, did you also look at the sign, all that, their setback, if makes sense to you and for that?
The sign, I believe, they, they did move it back, and with, with the setback that they have, there is adequate sight distance along the street.
Beautiful.
If it were on the other end of the project, I would say it would be more of a concern, because you'd be trying to look through the sign to see an oncoming traffic.
Correct.
Where it is, uh, if you make a right-hand turn, you don't have to worry about that sign. So I think it's okay where it is.
Good.
I do not have the annotation with the five, uh, your five outstanding comments.
You don't, you don't have them?
It's not in the, in the file. Have you got a copy of it?
I don't have any. Just asking.
It's, uh, two.
As long as I have ten percent. Does the applicant see those?
I don't know.
See if he agrees to those items.
Did you open that door, Mister?
Not yet.
I'm gonna try and make it there. I'm touching on a package house and sitting in the back deck with them, getting sunburned like I did.
You can post in the backseat and grab your drink everywhere.
I'm trying to grab the meat, so. I have medication and drink.
Have you left driving, just put in the backseat, drop it off?
Yeah, I passed. She would have to work overtime, so this might do it.
What?
She should have worked overtime, so. It's not doing.
You did your greatest job.
Is she back?
I think so. I think you can type, or, uh, hour.
That brings up a point. Do they have to request sewer, location like that, where sewer already serviced the site?
I think they would have to contact the sewer, depending what the capacity is for.
I mean, I don't imagine it's a large capacity. It's just employee restrooms, I imagine, but.
I would think that the motel, motel would have a larger.
Had a larger, yeah, I would think so.
Especially.
I didn't know if there was.
Just needs to run out by the half hour. Lot, lot of washups. Lot of washups.
Grease trap.
I think you can, for safety, you probably should, that's only a bit, you know, more.
I just wonder what your procedure was, because you kind of take it for granted.
Uh, we usually don't get involved unless they require, you know, a certain amount, you know, for pool or different areas, you know. I don't think anything's come before this board, you, either, saying that it's more or less the capacity. You might wanna get a lot for the sewer conditions.
Water, what about water?
Uh, or if it exists, I don't think that, they would just have to pay for the water.
Connection.
Connection, that's on second, it's like for a lot of district.
Okay.
That's still over, uh, is that onset side over there or?
Huh?
Is that onset over there or?
That's onset, yeah.
Yeah, that's onset.
Ontic, onset water district.
Okay, just charge.
Yeah, they, yeah. They're gonna have to coordinate this, both the service connection and the, uh, sprinkler connection. But I noticed that they show it on the utility plan, so they're aware of it, these two lines. I assume you've touched base with onset fire?
Yeah, I, I spoke.
To see what their requirements.
I spoke with both onset fires as well, onset water requiring.
Yeah. Yeah, they'll probably want a master box, and they'll want a, a Knox box on the point somewhere.
Yeah, those, those, that is still, they are kept, they were made, part, part of that building, today.
Yeah. Absolutely.
You requested sewer, what kind of also?
I spoke with Mister Campina regarding the, um, reuse of the existing sewer stuff for the old motel. Um, do you like locations?
Could you, could you come to the microphone, please?
Sure. I spoke with, uh, Mister Campina regarding reuse of the existing sewer stuff, uh, for the old motel, and he provided us with some information as to the location, um, and connection point. He didn't have any concerns with the flow, uh, based upon Title V. It's less than five hundred gallons per day for the two employee restrooms in the size of the building, uh, far less than what the motel would have been, you know, outputting into the sewer system.
It's pretty good, I think.
Probably my anywhere near a stalker.
Actually, the, uh. The landscape plan. Dated six thirty, has more plantings than.
Not in that front island, though.
Yeah, I, I believe Mister Rowley's comment was specifically regarding the center island in between the two entrance locations.
Yeah.
And, and the reason as to the reduction in the number of plantings, if you recall, originally, we requested a waiver from the two-foot-high berm along the front. Uh, and in lieu of that, we had proposed a more dense, uh, landscaping schedule in that area to provide additional screening of the site and the parking area. With the addition of the two-foot-high berm, we reduced the intensity of plantings in that area, as we felt that the number of plantings in the berm was adequate to provide a visual screen of the parking area, uh, under the current revision.
Am I looking at something, I'm seeing more plantings in the new plan than in my older plan. In the center island.
That's, that's the new one.
Yeah.
It's fifteen, right?
Mm-hmm.
This is the old one. You can count all of those.
I'll say, I was looking, I was looking at this one, just shows two trees.
Well, that's, that's what came in of the, under the first revision.
Oh, okay.
This is what came in afterwards, after I'd made the comment. But that's what the original one looked like, and it was my comment that adding a, a two-foot change in grade doesn't add or diminish from the screening that will take place. I mean, you're still gonna see cars, no matter whether you've got a two-foot little berm and you don't have, or you put dense plantings.
Mm-hmm.
So, and I just couldn't see any reason why you wanted to take out nicely from the landscape buffer that they put in and put something like that in.
Could be a bomb, just the same thing, same plan, just change the grade. You've got plenty of room to work. So you need to walk there.
Yeah. You're trying to bring in all the lights, so. Which one's, which one's gets us there? Don't go mostly. It's like a five, you know, which is. It's not, human dog, if you want, don't go in the woods. Can you hold my eyes for the dog?
Who?
Can I hold my eyes for the dog?
Yeah, sure.
You didn't, what was it, just, you have the glass?
You're crazy.
You can fix your glass.
I'm crazy.
So, just so, you know, can you, you can probably read this place. It looks like. We got some issues. Oh, he was bad.
Hmm?
He was bad.
Yeah, so that one took a guy.
Uh, so construction will comply with plan submittal. Uh, so construction will comply with plans submitted five fifteen and revised through six thirty. If construction not substantially re, uh, complete within two years of filing this decision with the town clerk less time required for appeals, allowed for appeals, then this approval will be, will expire. Applicant will coordinate site work and work with the planning board to schedule inspections prior to construction. Copy of the curb permit will be forwarded, Mass Highway permit forwarded to the planning department. Any changes to the plans required by Mass DOT will be brought back to the board for determination. I know we had a conversation on the fence with the adjoining, uh, residents.
Right.
Uh, construction calls for adding to existing fence that adjoining residents. Applicant will maintain and repair fences needed. Uh, was there any other site speci- specific? You want to do something with that center island, or?
Revert back to the original set of plans?
I'm gonna look at that one, maybe.
What's the date of the one you checked out?
Uh, six, six, fourteen. Better use the big ones, I can see it.
I understand what you're saying.
Do you have instructions?
Yes.
Stick figures.
I guess.
Have you contacted the?
Holly.
Did you see that? Yeah, did you see that contact? Nothing more? We did receive, uh, natural heritage decision. Was it forward, we don't think it is.
She did.
Nothing ever been. Ah, it's just, it's just.
Looks like they're all enjoying for, uh, onset.
Six, six.
Four.
Yeah.
Or not?
Uh, what's your pleasure on that?
Could I ask a question again?
Sure.
Cause I'm, um, on the left-hand side of that, I hate getting back to this, but I asked a question about the three and a half foot sidewalk on the left-hand side, cause I was concerned about public safety walking on the sidewalk.
Mm-hmm.
But the solution that I heard with the concrete bounds also concerns me because I think they could be a hazard for the truckers and for the snowplow removal people. So I guess my question is, is, can we just leave it as it is proposed at three and a half feet, or do you agree that it could be a safety hazard?
You, you've got them on the opposite side anyway, um, I don't know why there would be any more of a problem for plowing.
Alright. Okay.
And I think it would provide a little bit added safety, if you pulled it back from the edge of the curb, at least the car's wheel is gonna stop at that point and not up against the curb itself, which really reduces the width.
I was just thinking that on the left-hand side, they are the curb, so the plow is gonna run straight along with them.
Yeah.
And clean them up. On this side, if you, if you build that small area, that's gonna have to be hand shoveled off to the parking lot so that can then be plowed away. And I, I don't like to see that, as a person who has plowed in the past myself, I, I find it troubling. So, I guess my question is, um, is it more of a hindrance than a help? Because it could also then become a slip and fall situation, cause the shoveler didn't shovel it correctly. I mean, I, I didn't wanna open up a, uh, issue, I just had a question about what is the norm for sidewalks around buildings for safety of pedestrians? And so that was my question, really.
If, if you're putting it there for pedestrian use, um, it should be the four or five feet. Handicapped accessible, I believe is five. Um, Stan, I think it's five.
I mean, I, I just see the, I just see the park, I see the parking spaces right there, so.
For, for handicap.
I understand.
I know that the employees will tend to probably park in that general area, but there will be spaces for customers and on the busy times of year, which Christmas time and snow time, there's gonna be people walking in that parking lot and they're gonna wanna get onto the sidewalk as soon as possible, especially with children, which I have to think that the customer base of this type of store is a high volume of children. They wanna get onto the sidewalk and then it's three and a half feet really enough to protect them from a car, like you said, coming over with the nose of it.
I think it would if you had the wheel stopped.
Yeah.
But if you don't, it means that they could pull the car right up until the wheel touches the, the end of the sidewalk. Which means the overhang is gonna be right up to the building.
Means the snow, the, the guys would haul the snow on that sidewalk and there'll be no place for them to walk.
Right. So, I didn't mean to open up a can of worms or a problem, but I'm looking at three and a half feet and I just don't think it's safe, so.
I think it would.
Well, to answer the, the comment there on the ADA, the ADA requirement is five feet wide. That section there is not intended for ADA use. The ADA access is on the front entrance and on the right side of the building.
Right.
It would be here, right?
Yeah.
So, just to make, make that clear.
Yes, yeah, I saw, I knew the.
So, there's no ADA issue on that side at the moment.
There's no ADA parking, I, I saw that, I knew that.
Correct, correct.
Like I said, I'm mostly concerned with just children coming, coming over across the parking lot.
I didn't see it. Do we have a, the sign that they're gonna put out? Isn't that gonna be a sign?
It's a, it's a low sign.
Yeah, we did have a picture of that.
Do you have a detail of that?
Yeah, and that's all been approved and looked at and they revised it.
Does, does that have the street address on the sign?
I don't know if the detail that was submitted showed a street address, but if it's part.
Cause you need to have any, like, six-inch letters. You, you, you know, one thing I, drives me crazy, I don't buy a apartment for years, is buildings, you know, maybe Doyle General now, but twenty years from now it could be X, Y, Z.
Yeah.
Trying to find the building number.
Oh, I know.
Yeah, I, I don't believe the detail that was submitted showed the building number.
The picture shows no number facing the street.
Yeah, on, on the rendering, it doesn't show anything.
You know, really need to make sure you, you put the street address clearly visible from, from primary highway.
The, the permitting of the sign, for the sign permit itself is handled by a national lender. I'm sure they'll do everything that they need to, to comply with the sign permit, if that includes putting six-inch high lettering for the street number, I'm sure that'll be on there.
Just needs to be clearly legible.
Mm-hmm.
At one point, there were three sets of numbers on around permisit there.
Yeah.
You'd have three, three number twenty-sevens on the same street.
That, that, that makes it real fun to try to find someone.
Do you wanna make that a, a part of this conditions of approval, Charlie?
Yeah, it should be, it should be that the property, street address should be po, should be clearly visible from, you know, I would think at least five or six-inch letters, the, the number.
Just, just to be sure that your thought doesn't get lost, I was, just thinking it oughta go in there, that's all.
Yeah, I mean, I. You know, nothing drives police and fire and the ambulance is crazier than trying to find street numbers when they're not, you know, when they're not visible. They take them down, they paint the building and they never go back up.
Yeah, it's, it's not an uncommon condition or an item to see in a, in a building code, even if it's a local amendment to have a certain size lettering for the street address, so.
No. Yeah, I, I know in Boone, we, we wouldn't sign an occupancy permit until the numbers were in the building. They went on, they, they didn't put the numbers up, they didn't get an occupancy permit. I took you at the problem.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Street number clearly visible on sign and building?
Either one, yeah, one or the other, I mean, I, if it's on the sign, it's clearly visible, I, that's fine.
Yep.
I, I believe onset fire actually has a requirement for the building themselves to, to have a certain lettering size, so that they can visually, visually see it when they're coming down the street.
I'm, I'm sure they do. Again, it shouldn't be.
Yeah, it's usually not an issue with new buildings, it's the older buildings.
So, I, I think it'll. It's the older ones that have the problem, yeah.
It's after they've been a while.
Um. How do you wanna handle the, uh, center island?
Increase the density back to the, the original as.
They are putting sod on the island. I saw that they are putting sod on the island as well, something.
Yeah. You just feel guilty, because you told us about, about your building.
I just saw fruit trees.
Yeah, yeah. It almost looks like the same site with the trees behind it by the tracks.
The ones I cut through.
Yeah, and there is a thin spot in the center, see?
Yeah, that's where I go through. Make me a fly goat. They didn't say it.
Is that what you wish to see, the original planning schedule?
For the center island?
Mm-hmm.
I think that would be appropriate.
Might add to an otherwise plain-looking building.
I do, I was looking at the species comparison, see which, I thought we had quality and not quantity, but.
They're the same.
That didn't bear out. But that's subjective, anyway. Alright. Is there anything further, uh? Sight lighting to be.
Did you say sight lighting?
Hmm.
Yeah, they reviewed that with us previously and after hours, they just leave the storefront.
Ship security lighting on?
Little lights in the storefront and then on the left-hand side, the loading area, they said there's a light there. Other than that, I think he said they should turn them all off.
Anything further? Um, hearing none, would I, anyone care to make a motion?
Sure. Did, did you conclude your discussion about the building front? You all set with that?
The, hundred and forty feet, you, hundred and forty feet having the bump out.
Or the which?
Or whether or not the, what they have there, in your opinion, meets the bylaw, that was one of the comments I put in the last.
Yeah, yeah. I, I thought we'd had that discussion last time we were here, but I, is there any?
I didn't know if it was concluded, that's the only reason I put it back in, George.
Yeah. I thought we felt that it met the. Three.
Well, it wasn't as pictu- picturesque as we'd hoped, we felt it.
No, they. They built all the buildings.
It met the, uh, bylaw. Does break it up a little bit, I'm sure it'll look better in person than it does in print.
I wouldn't bet on it.
No, no, it's like a warehouse.
Yeah.
Well, that bump out they put on the front of Walmart, that. That didn't work. Just work to keep the rain off of it, that's about it.
Did you make a motion, Charlie?
Okay, a mo- motion to approve the, the site development plan for, of the proposed Dollar General thirty-one thirty-seven to thirty-one thirty-nine Cranberry Highway with the conditions that George has outlined in his letter.
There was second? Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Construction will start Thursday?
Probably as soon as they get their Mass D O T permit.
That's good. My wife's looking forward to it.
It's actually, uh, one that's just recently opened up in my neck of the woods up in Westminster that, uh, my wife is itching to get to as well, so.
I'm sure.
So, I wanted to see how it is in Westminster.
Wives love those dollar things.
Does it look like this in Westminster?
Yes. It's a, it's a different, uh, prototype, it's, the long axis is perpendicular to the road rather than parallel, but it's the same thing. It's their prototype architecture.
We had that conversation with the developer and it is one of the homeliest stores that I've seen for new construction and I was happy to tell him that. They don't add any value to the community.
I, I'm, I'm sure it's not the first time he heard, he's heard it, but they have their.
He didn't seem to care.
They have, they have the realm that they, uh, wish to work with, with the architecture, so.
Suppose it's a lot easier, keeping it consistent.
They have, they have a different contractor that does the building than that does the site, so the closer it is to the prototype, the cheaper it is, the easier it is for construction, for timing.
Oh, yeah, we understand them, we understand the logic.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah.
I appreciate everybody's time.
Take good care.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in. I got some bills here, but they're over thirty days old, so I think we could just.
If they're more than fifty dollars, I'd say table.
I got two that are. Motion to adjourn.
I thought I signed off on some of these, alright.
Uh, though, yeah, no, those are brand new, I emailed those to David today.
Mm-hmm.
These are the originals.
Oh, okay.
What?
God bless. Bless again.
Must be the bills that make it.
Yeah, must be the bills.
You don't make the big money.
Must be the money.
Why you hang around it all day?
I was unable to find out how much was in the fifty-three Gs for each, but I think you're okay.
Uh, both the bills are under the estimate, so I gave. Not by much.
And I'm sure they'll appreciate it.
Thirty-three, right? Thirty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents difference?
Yeah.
Just, just so we stay on top of that, if you could give us an estimate of what you think the inspections for both these projects are going to run?
I, I did, I believe, on S and H. And I think I did on Dollar General, but I'll check that one. I know it, I know that you have the inspection fees for S and H. That's in my original letter, which dates back to February, I think.
And also, um... The other project that I mentioned.
McCarthy.
The McCarthy inspection.
I talked with David about that, he didn't know if there was a fifty-three G account set up for that.
Mm-hmm.
And I just, you know, looked at it as I go by. I'm not sure how much is completed around the building, there's a few shrubs at the top of the hill, that's all I see.
Yeah, I, I drove up in there the other day and I saw some fresh paving, but I couldn't, there was a barrier across, so I couldn't tell if it was binder or top whether there was a step there.
Yeah.
And the landscaping seemed pretty sparse, but I didn't have a plan to look at with me.
Well, I, I don't have a pocket of plan either, so...
All right, I'll see if I can follow up on that. See where the, uh... Put your bills right in here.
Thank you.
Um, that's it.
What?
Um, next week, our regular meeting, the fourteenth.
Yes.
Um, we do have Bay Point Country Club is coming in for, or whoever it is that represents them, is coming in with a plan to see the public hearing date. So is everybody good for next week, or?
Look at that.
You want to be here next week, Joe? What's the, what's the verdict?
Which verdict are we talking?
The one we want to hear.
I said I'd stay on, take care of these projects. You know. My, my appointment card says June of seventeen. As soon as you can find somebody.
So you'll, you'll stay for a while?
Until you find somebody. I'm not going to leave you high and dry so you can't do a hearing, but, you know, I would wouldn't break my, Monday nights, I work Monday d- days, every Monday. And I just, you know, I leave work at six, run home, wolf down supper and try to get here at seven, it's, it's a bit much. On top of other meetings, you know.
No, we appreciate it, Joe.
Right. Understand.
And I...
The wife's not retiring, so we're not leaving on vacation.
So you tell her you're traveling without her?
Yeah, I'll find someone else to travel.
Is your life insurance paid up?
Yeah, I'm sure she's got it paid up.
All right, I guess...
So, motion to adjourn?
Very good, Joe. So any discussion? Alon Peva?
Aye.
Nice job.